You're listening to the best of The Martha Zoller Show. You can hear the show live Monday through Friday from nine to 11 on AM 550 and FM 102.9 W D U N and streaming at accesswdun.com. You can find all things Martha Zoller at martha zoller dot com. Back under the gold dome, there's a bunch of stuff going on. Representative Brent Cox is with us right now, and he was, I think you were the author of this initiative, right Brent?
Yes, I was.
Yes. So tell us about this support for Israel resolution that was passed yesterday.
Well, it was a surprisingly exciting day. It was, it was, it was, some of the things that occurred weren't quite expected, but basically the resolution stated two things. One, that we acknowledged as the state that Hamas is a terrorist group, which we're against. And two, that we stand with Israel and the Jewish people and all that they need to do to eradicate Hamas. So that was the purpose and the point of the resolution. And it also stated that we would be praying for all the families, innocent families that had been involved in what's been going on as well.
So there were 129 yays and two nays, and there's 180 people in the legislature. Were all of them initially present, even though all of them didn't vote?
Most, most were there. There was a moment before we were able to present that it was a technicality that the Democrat Party was working on to see if we should be presenting a resolution during a special session. It's not a bill, it's a resolution. So therefore it was decided that yes, the resolution could go through. And then there was a recess, and the recess was, I guess about 35 minutes where the Democrat caucus got together to discuss, I guess where they were. They came back and there was about two that voted no and roughly 30 that walked or basically walked on the vote.
And then what about the others? They just didn't vote?
The others voted in support of it. So you had a split Democrat Party and pretty much all of the Republican side. I think we may have had one or two that weren't around, but all the Republicans were in support of the resolution.
So where's that? And there's 180 total in the, in the State House? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, first of all, you've never heard me probably make this speech before, but I get so angry when people don't vote. And I'll tell you why. Because you asked for this job. You went out and campaigned for it. You raised money for it. You knocked on doors. I don't mean you personally, but you did too. You asked for it. No one forced you to do it. And part of the, part of the thing you're supposed to do is you're supposed to vote. You're voting in response to things. And when people walk out, whether it was Jen Jordan on the, Jordan on the Senate side a couple of years ago, when she didn't want to vote on anything that was going to hurt her as an Attorney General candidate, or what happened here yesterday, where 30 people just didn't, you know, walked out like they had more important things to do. It drives me nuts.
I get it. I'm kind of of the same cut of cloth, but my take is I'm, I'm a yes or no. And I'm a no till I'm convinced yes. That's kind of how my logic is. And I have to work to yes. And it's important that you make a stance and, and you, you let the people know what you're standing for. Pretty much if you walk, you're voting no, right? So you're not in support of something. It's just you didn't hit the red button.
So what do you think were the reasons? Do they have districts? Were they have split? You know, I mean, if they have a district where the people wouldn't support it, why wouldn't you vote no? I mean,
It was, it was interesting. We have, for instance, down in Chatham County, which is one of the oldest settlements, if you will, for the Jewish people in the state of Georgia. I think maybe the first, it's believed to be the first governor in the US that was Jewish was from the state of Georgia many years ago. But Chatham County had three Democrats walk, which was a little surprising that that occurred. And I don't, I don't, the concern wasn't that they were in support of, I mean, everyone I believe is against Hamas. The question becomes, some were wanting to hear ceasefire on what's going on in Gaza. Others are, you didn't mention Palestine. And we specifically didn't mention, we didn't mention any of those groups. Like clearly there's innocent lives that are Jewish, Israeli, other parts of the world, Palestinians, Arab Muslims, I mean, from all over the world. There's no way that we possibly know everyone that's been impacted. So the word, so just that we're praying with the families, that's important that we get them all and we don't exclude anyone that has been impacted infinitely from what's going on. But here still, all the blood that's, that's been shed to this day, it all lies at the hands of Hamas and the seeds they sowed. I mean, if you reverse this, I mean, one great point yesterday was that if Hamas would put down their guns, there would be peace. If Israel puts down their guns, there would be no Israel. So that's a great point.
No, I think you're right about that. And, and one of the challenges that I think we have when we look at this issue is that they really can't explain. One of your colleagues was on another radio show this morning, Spencer Frye, who was one of the people that voted no, or he walked, one of the two.
He walked, he walked.
And he twisted, you know, I mean, he went through five different reasons why he did, he voted no, and just really couldn't explain it. Because I think that's what the problem is. You really can't explain why you would be opposed to any of, any of the things that were said there. And you're right that, that Israel, things would still be going along fine. And that the whole thing, the whole Palestinian thing drives me nuts too, because I know the history. The term Palestinian wasn't ever used until 1964, and it had to do with the Palestinian Liberation Army. There was no country ever called Palestine. Okay. And, and if you want to talk about, and they call the Israelis, some people call the Israelis colonizers. Well, no, they've been there since the beginning. They were, they were the ones driven out. You'd think they would be cheering about them coming back, but it's not the way it goes. So what, the point I'm making is that the folks that oppose this stuff have to twist themselves up in such knots to justify it, that they know they're wrong.
Yeah, it's, it's, so Yahya Sinwar was, in 2006, was locked up in prison for four life sentences for killing Palestinian collaborators with the Israeli government and was locked up for those killings. He then comes down with a brain tumor and thought he was going to die. Ultimately, Israeli doctors helped cure him from his brain tumor and he lived. Then he was released in 2011 for an exchange of one Israeli soldier for a thousand prisoners, one of which was him. And he is the Bin Laden of Hamas and Gaza. And I, I show that analogy as that the Israeli people truly are trying to bring light and life to people, while even when they, when the other side in Hamas gets life, they're still trying to kill the very people that helped save their life. It's that simple. It's either you're bringing life or you're not. And they have to eradicate Hamas to keep this evil from happening. And, and, you know, God speaks. That's where I stand with them. I am strong Israel. You know that already. And we've just got to keep supporting the only democracy in the Middle East. It's pretty simple.
It's very simple. Brent Cox, thank you so much for being with us today. Keep fighting the good fight.
Thanks. Have a great Christmas. Y'all come to the Capitol. The trees up. It is beautiful down here right now.
It's local radio, and that's why you're listening. It's The Martha Zoller Show on AM 550 and FM 102.9 W D U N.
It was announced a couple of days ago that Lauren Curry was going to be the first female Chief of Staff for a governor of Georgia. And it got me to thinking about my good friend Joan Kirchner Carr, who is, who has been the Chief of Staff to three senators for a while. So we were going to talk a little bit about that first, but also about politics. We love talking about that. Joan, how are you?
I'm great, Martha. How are you doing?
Good. You are a trailblazer. Do you really think of yourself that way?
Well, some people think I should have had my head examined. I served in the US Senate for 20 years for working for three Georgia senators. Yeah. And I think, I believe I was the, the first woman chief in the Georgia delegation.
Yes, I think you were too. And you started out by being Chief of Staff to Zell Miller, correct?
That, that's right. That's right. Well, I, I started out, you know, I covered him the eight years he was governor when I was an AP reporter at the Capitol. And, and then when he, he got that appointment from Governor Barnes to fill out the rest of Paul Coverdale's term, when Senator Coverdale passed away so unexpectedly, he asked if I wanted to come join him in Washington. I thought, well, that would be fun. And I literally, he was going to just serve those four years that were left on Coverdale's term. And I thought I would go up for four years and come back and then, and for, for 20. So.
Yeah. And I can't believe that was 20 years ago. Gosh, that is, you know, it's 22 years ago, I think now. But, because if Barnes was still governor, it had to be before 2002. So.
That's right. It was, it was the summer of 2000 is when Senator Coverdale passed away and, and Zell Miller got that appointment.
And you started out in communications, correct? So it was kind of more of a direct line from what you had been doing.
That's exactly right. I went, I started as his Communications Director. And then for the first, then his Chief of Staff the second two years that he was there. And it's interesting. I, I started my Senate career and ended on 50/50 Senate, on the 50/50 Senate. It was, it was a 50/50 Senate when Zell Miller came in, in 2020. And when, started in 2021. And, and I ended, sorry, in 2001. And then I ended in 2021. And after the two Georgia Senate seats flipped, it was again a 50/50 Senate.
Well, and we've been there for about 20 years, honestly, because George Bush's second election was a little more than 50%, but not much more than 50%. We haven't had on the presidential level, we haven't had a landslide presidential election since 19, gosh, I don't know, maybe Obama's second term was a little more, but I think it was about 54, 53, something like that. So we haven't had like a Reagan level reelection in quite a long time. And, you know, I think we need it, Joan. I mean, I think we need to have a big winner, whoever the president is. I talk a lot, I talk a lot about how this is kind of like the seventies, you know, where you had a perceived weak president in Jimmy Carter. He, he wasn't, he just had dealt, got dealt a different set of cards. We had high inflation. We had violence in the cities. We had people moving from the cities to the suburbs. And it's real similar to what we're seeing right now. But I don't know who that communicator is, that person that can bring us together, because I haven't seen him yet, or her.
I think you're right, Martha. And, and also each of, each of these elections from Bush forward has been questioned, you know, the legitimacy of it has been questioned. Bush with the hanging chads and Barack with the birth certificate and, and Trump with the, you know, Hillary Russians claim. And then, you know, the Biden-Trump 2020 election was fraud. So it's, we, 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 I think Georgia especially could get, want to get back to a, a solid win on, on one side or the other, for goodness sake.
Now, from there, you went on to be the Chief of Staff for Johnny Isaacson, who was, correct?
Yes, that's right. And I also had covered him when he was in the Georgia Legislature. So we knew each other. And when Zell Miller announced in, in 2003 that indeed he was going to go home and he was not going to seek a full term to the seat, Johnny called me up and asked me to meet him in the, in the Capitol. He was over on the US House side, of course, and I was over on the Senate side. And, and we met in the middle on a bench, sat down on a bench. And he said, I'm getting in this Senate race and it's going to be an open seat and, you know, anything, but if I win, I'd love for you to stay. And I, you know, on a whim, I thought to myself, well, it's an open Senate race. It could go it, you know, anyway. And, and I, but I said, I said, if you win, I'll stay. Cause that was just who Johnny was. And the thought of, I knew, I covered him. And the thought of getting to work for him was very enticing. And, and so I stayed. And I, I had to wait my turn to become Chief of Staff, because first it was Keith Garrett for two years, then it was Chris Carr for the next six, and then I was his final chief for his final six years in office.
And it's, it's so interesting, because when you look at somebody like Johnny Isaacson, I remember asking him, because Johnny always did better than the average Republican in a general election.
He did, yes.
And it was mainly because he was able to get a lot of the women's vote, a lot more than the traditional Republican. Because we are 55% of the vote, Joan. You know, we need to stop acting like we're a minority part of the vote.
Amen, sister. Amen, sister. So he got, he got women and he got a larger percentage of the black vote than, than most Republicans as well. Yeah.
Well, and I remember asking him about that at one point. And, and he said, well, you know what, Martha? I had this company called Northside Realty, where I had 3,019 employees that were mostly women. And this was before non-competes. He said, you know, so somebody could decide they didn't like me and go across the street and work for my competitor. So I learned how to get along with women.
Oh, well, Martha, he, he absolutely, he not only knew how to get along with women, he, he revered them in a, in a very respectful way. And, and Chris and Heath will both tell you that, you know, they, they claim he favored me over them. You know, that if he asked all three of us our opinion on an issue, he, Heath would answer, Chris would answer, and then I would answer. He goes, Joan, that's exactly right.
Well, you know what? I can believe that, because for years, and you remember this, for years, about once a year, we'd either go out to lunch, Johnny and I would, or I'd come to his office and meet with him. And we would just talk, you know, openly about politics. We would just talk completely off the record. We would, we would share a lot of things. And he was just a good guy, you know?
Oh, he was, he was.
They don't make them like that anymore. A true gentleman, who.
And well, and when I started working for him in 2005, I, I needed to tell him some personal news that I was, I was going through a divorce. And he, he knew my ex-husband. And so I want, I said, Johnny, I need you to hear this from me before you hear it on the streets, that, that I'm, you know, I'm, I am going through a divorce. And a tear was trickling down my cheek as I said it. And he looked at me and he said, darling, in 30 years of real estate, I've been through more divorces and menopausis than any man on this planet. Whatever you need, whatever you need. And, and right then I knew I had gone to work for the right guy.
Yeah.
And I laughed so hard. And that's just who he was, though.
But that point of you going to him saying, I want you to hear it from me, you know, it's kind of like when you and I have had clients before, the thing I always tell them is that it doesn't matter what your bad news is. The important thing is that you tell it, you tell it yourself, and you tell it all. And that's whether it's in a private conversation with your boss, or if you're some public figure where you've got to make a public statement, the timing is really important.
The timing is so important. And I'll never forget, Martha, when, when Johnny revealed to Heath and I privately that he, in 2015, that he had Parkinson's. And he, he, he brought us in, he sat us down. He goes, I need to tell you something, you know, I've been diagnosed with Parkinson's. Now, let's get on to this vote I've got this afternoon. I said, whoa, 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 whoa. I said, timeout, timeout. I said, Johnny, you're in cycle for 2016 right now. And I really think the voters need to know this. I think they, you need to be upfront with them and let them decide if they want to vote for you for reelection with all the facts on the table. Because people had noticed some change in his gait and some, you know, some changes in his physical appearance. And I said, if you don't fill in the blanks for them, they will fill it in for themselves. And it will be much worse. Well, he looked at me like I had three heads, like, why would I do that? Oh, my gosh. And so we went through a, a couple of months of going back and forth over this. And, and he allowed me to talk to his neurologist and, and, you know, ask all the questions that a reporter might ask. And, and he came to the conclusion, okay, I'm, I'm, I'll do this, I'll do this. But he was terrified. He was terrified that it was going to ruin his career. And then we announced it. And the response was overwhelming, positive of people thanking him for bringing awareness, for coming, you know, being so honest about it. And he won reelection easily in 2016.
Yeah. And to show that it's not the end of the world, that you can go on and have a life. You know, there are these words, Parkinson's disease, cancer, you know, heart attack, that you hear them and you think, and you are forever changed. Okay. I went through that with my husband eight and 10 years ago. He had cancer, but he's now eight and 10 years out from the cancer that he had. And every year is a blessing. But we had to face it, you know, head on. And, and, and that was the right thing to do. So you went from Johnny Isaacson to Kelly Loeffler. So.
Yes.
Tell us about working for her, number one, because she's a female CEO, very different kind of situation. But also how the world changed in the 20 years you were there.
Oh, well, to that second point, I mean, the world changed so much. I mean, when I started in the Senate in, in 2001, I mean, there was, there was, you know, there was no social media. There was no.
And it was before 9/11. It was before 9/11.
Yes. And it, and 9/11 happened, you know, 10 months after I got there. So, so, so much has changed. And, and also the climate and the camaraderie in the Senate was so much different back then. I mean, Republicans and Democrats actually talked to each other, socialized together, you know, but went out and had a drink or had dinner at night together. And, and today it is so divisive that both sides feel like they can't even be seen socializing with someone of the other side for fear that their, their voters at home in their base will, will punish them for it. And we've commoditized fear, division, and anger to the point where, you know, nobody wants to be seen with, with the other side. And that's a shame. One, because you can't get anything done in the Senate with its rules without having support from some people on the other side. And, and, and two, it's just a shame, because so much more could get resolved, I think, if we, if, if more people would be willing to just reach across the aisle and talk to each other, not give up your values or, or your beliefs, but just talk to each other. But anyway, so Kelly Loeffler, yes, Governor Kemp appointed Kelly Loeffler when Johnny had to step down at the end of, of 2019. And she was immediately thrust into what was, had to be Georgia's craziest election of all time. It was a jungle general election, meaning there was no primary where we chose one Democrat to go to the, to the general election. All the candidates, anyone who signed up to run was on the ballot in November. And I think there were 21 candidates on the ballot. And then the top two vote getters in the, of those 21 would go on to the runoff. And of course, it ended up being Kelly Loeffler and Raphael Warnock. Dale Warnock won the general. But it was a, it was a brutal year for someone who, who had never run for office before. You know, and Kelly came out of the business, the highest levels of, of the business world, working at, at the Intercontinental Exchange, or ICE. And, you know, she had gone from the farm to the, the top of Wall Street. And she knew the business world so well. And I, I remember senators would, would come up to her on the Senate floor and pull her aside and said, Kelly, can you explain cryptocurrency to me? And, and she could, and, and in a way that they could understand it. So, you know, she, she absolutely knew what she was talking about when it, when it came to financial issues and business issues. But she was thrust into this, you know, political free for all where, where the president, you know, had just watched Doug Collins give a, a full-throated and strong defense of him on Fox News every night, when the House was going through the impeachment process. And, 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 you know, the fear was that, that the president was going to come out and endorse Doug Collins. So Kelly had to immediately develop a relationship with the president, which she did. And, and it kept him, I think, from, from making an endorsement in this, in this race, in this Senate race, which helped her.
I think it did. But just finishing up on Kelly Loeffler, Joan, is that, so you were with her until she left office, which was the 20th of January that day, 2021. And so then you came back to Georgia, right?
I did, I did. You know, those last five years or so in, in the Senate for me, I had come, moved back to Georgia when Chris Carr and I got married and, and was commuting back and forth to Washington. And I'm glad to be done with, with that commute. I don't recommend it.
Yeah, it was hard, right?
It, it is hard. And people thought, you know, think it's, oh, you're, you commute to Washington for your job. That must be so glamorous. It's anything but glamorous. You're staying in a hotel by yourself, you know, you're, you're living out of a suitcase. The, the hotel clerks know you're by name when you come in. That's not a great thing. So I am so happy to, to be based, you know, back in Georgia and, and working here full time. It's, it's fantastic.
And we've got about two minutes left. I just, how different has it been now making this transition from, you know, being kind of behind the scenes to being, you know, still behind the scenes in a way, because you're the spouse, but you're also out there a lot more?
I am. Well, this, you know, I've hung up my own shingle with a consulting firm. It's just me and I do kind of communications, networking, strategy. The only campaign I work on though, is, is my husband's Chris Carr.
That's right.
Um, cause it, it would get me into way too much hot water to work on anyone else's. But, and, and I'm not lobbying. I'm, I'm just doing kind of behind the scenes kind of stuff to keep me out of Chris's lane, so to speak. But yeah, but it also is enormous flexibility that allows me to go on the road with him when he goes around the state. And we, we like doing this together, his campaigning. I think it makes a difference when, when the family shows up. And they, you know, the Kemp's have shown that's a great model with their family as well. And so, so I like to go whenever possible. And, you know, when, when we get to an event, I'm very comfortable working in a room. So we can kind of divide and conquer. And he'll go one direction, I'll go the other, and then we'll meet back up in the middle.
Well, he's done a great job as Attorney General, but also I've seen you at a bunch of these events, and you are very good at it. So it's good. It's great.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah. Well, Joan, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you. And we're going to be talking to Joan more over the next few months about political issues and that kind of thing, and the things that she can weigh in on, because her expertise is really one that's important. And we appreciate you being with us today, Joan.
Oh, Martha, it's always so great to be with you. And thank you for what you do with this show. You do such a good job.
Putting the talk in news talk. It's The Martha Zoller Show on AM 550 and FM 102.9 W D U N.
Joining me right now is John Ashbrook, who has become my new favorite person, along with comfortably smug Josh Holmes and Michael Duncan. They have a podcast called The Ruthless, it's The Ruthless Podcast. Sometimes they call it The Ruthless Variety Show, but it comes out Tuesdays and Thursdays. And special editions sometimes, they did a live one. And, you know, it's, it's a must listen. It's a little irreverent, a lot of reverent, really. And they talk about all the things we're thinking as political operatives. John, thank you and welcome back to the program.
Well, it's great to be with you, Martha. Thanks for having me. Just a real treat to, to spend some time with you on a Friday morning.
Oh, man, it really is. And you guys have been busy this week because you had the debate, but you didn't have a show in Tuscaloosa. Were you still mad about the college football playoffs?
There are a lot of people mad about the college football playoff.
Hey, me too.
But we had, we, we had, we had some, we had some scheduling conflicts. So we weren't able to make it to, to this one in person. But, you know, it looks like they're going to have two or maybe three more debates ahead of Iowa and then New Hampshire. So maybe we'll, we'll be back down. And maybe we'll see you there.
Yeah. I tell you what, I think having them in Iowa, New Hampshire make a lot more sense, because you're actually speaking to the audience that is going to make the difference. Because, you know, obviously, if there's someone besides Donald Trump as the nominee, then it's going to happen in Iowa, New Hampshire. And that's going to start things going.
Yeah, no, I agree. That's, that's, that's really the only way for it to work. And, you know, it seems like both DeSantis and Nikki Haley have sort of separated themselves from the rest of the pack as the, as the, the real competitors for the number two spot. And man, did they go at it, at the debate this week.
Yeah. So there, I've heard different things. You know, Megyn Kelly thought that Nikki had her weakest performance. Some of you guys thought it was a good performance. She didn't go after every attack, but I personally think that's a better approach. Because when you get down in the mud and you end up responding to the attack, then that's all it's about is the back and forth. Now, Megyn Kelly's view is, and I know you guys know her well as I do, is that she likes the back and forth. She wants it to be a gun as I do, is that she likes the back and forth. She wants it to be a gun show, you know, between the people yelling back and forth at each other. That's what she defines as a good debate. I thought this one was better because it was more substantive. Now, I know I'm a weirdo when it comes to that, right? But I like to hear what they're actually going to do. And I think that while at the beginning of DeSantis's run, he was talking a little too much about what he did in Florida, but he's found the way to do it the right way, where he says, all of these things are important, and yeah, I did these things.
Well, I, you know, you mentioned Megyn Kelly, and I really was so impressed by her. I'm always so impressed by her. She is, she's so professional. She does such a great job in these debate environments in particular. And I think, you know, News Nation was really smart to partner with her for this one. But I, you know, look, I think, I think Nikki did better than, than a lot of people. Then, you know, I disagree with the people who think she didn't do a great job. I actually think she did fine. She was just the center of attention because of her meteoric rise to second place here over the past few weeks, and that's natural. And, you know, there were, there were a few moments where she was taking shots from Vivek and others. And, you know, she did, she didn't respond to him directly. But that's, that's her decision, you know. She's, she is, she's in second place for a reason, and it's because she's, she's running a good campaign. And I, I happen to think that this was probably Ron DeSantis's best performance. It seems like he's getting a little bit better with every one of these debates. And I'm with you on the substance. You know, I don't need to listen to them read me chapter and verse of the Federalist Papers, but I do like to hear Ron DeSantis talk about some of the things he's done successfully in Florida, and not try to shoehorn like a weird smile at the end of every, everything he's saying. Because he's actually, is a very passionate guy. He actually has achieved a lot. And when he takes the time to talk about that, or to talk about his vision, and it kind of, you know, you can tell when it's coming from the heart, when, when he's, you know, it sounds extremely authentic. And I think that's when he's at his best. I think that, you know, America, particularly on the Republicans, really fell in love with him during COVID, when every day he would do these press conferences and just, just do battle with the media. And I think that the more he can get back to that and away from this sort of like consultant-driven, you have to smile at X time. I mean, he's, I think he's better off.
So President Trump had a town hall the night before with Sean Hannity. And, you know, he made a little bit of news, you know, saying that he would follow the law, and he would not do any retribution, except on the first day, is what he said, you know, which was kind of interesting. He says, except on the first day. He was very Donald Trump. So what do you think about this strategy of him? He always does some sort of an event in parallel to these debates, but he's not going to the debates.
Well, if you talk to his campaign, and I'm sure you've heard this from, from them as well, but they'll tell you that we are running a campaign to win votes, not to entertain people. And so I think, I personally wish he would show up at the debates, because I think he's, I think he can, he can do both in these debates. I think that he's got the talent. We certainly saw in 2016, he has the talent to go head to head with other candidates. And I think, I don't think I'm alone in that opinion. I think a lot of people around the country would love to see him in the debates. But, you know, that's, that's just a, it's just a strategic decision they've made, and they're not, doesn't sound like they're, they're going to change it. But they're also not going to give up center stage entirely. And, you know, he's, he has, he has held parallel events, not, you know, basically at every single one of these, with varying degrees of success. It seemed like the one in Tuscaloosa drew a bunch of people. And, and I mean, I saw the Trump, the Trump team bragging about what they achieved that night. So I, you know, I think they feel very confident in their, in their decision on this, on this avoiding the debates thing. But he is still head and shoulders above everybody else. So they, they must be doing something right.
So the person who was really on, I think, the other night was Chris Christie. You know, I just love Chris Christie. My dad was from New Jersey, and so I just love that whole attitude. I know he doesn't have a chance, but he has said, he's, he is like taking the position, he's going to burn the house down. He is going to say what he thinks he should say. And you really saw that Chris Christie you've been looking for in that debate on Wednesday night, because he didn't leave anything out.
Yeah, I had hoped, Martha, to get more of that in previous debates. I mean, you saw some glimmers of it, but I was, I was disappointed in the first debate, because I thought that was coming, you know, like a Mack truck. And it just, he was okay. But it wasn't like, you know, two nights ago, when he was really on, you're right. And, you know, a lot of people are out there, they disagree with his politics, they, you know, they're not sure that they want the guy from New Jersey as the standard bearer for the Republican Party. But I think if everyone's being honest, they're, they're entertained by his style, you know. I mean, they love, which is one of the reasons he, you know, sort of catapulted the scene in the beginning, because he would take people head on in, you know, in, in even the smallest of situations. And he's not afraid to go head to head. But he's got a little bit of that, that Trump style. And I don't, I think, I think he was great. I love that he wasn't just going to let Vivek talk and talk and talk without a response. Because he's smart. He's been there. He's done a lot of, he's a very accomplished guy. So I agree with you. He was, he was really good.
He was good. We're talking to John Ashbrook from The Ruthless Podcast, and I got like two more questions for you. One, my favorite guy in the race, Doug Burgum, got out this week. Because, and what I loved about Doug Burgum, I'm married to a primary care physician. So he was the only person that was in the first debate where he actually told the truth about healthcare, where he said, you know, that healthcare is the only business in the world that has added more technology and is less efficient. And my husband was like cheering, because he's gone from, he's gone from being able to see lots of patients when he needs to, because sometimes you need to see a lot of patients. Sometimes you have time. It depends on if you got the flu or the, whatever. And, and this, this thing where you're asking questions that have nothing to do with the patient's visit, and you've got to put it in this electronic records thing, and the, and the doctor is sitting there, you know, looking at the keyboard and not at you. It's, it's a mess. And Doug Burgum's talked in a way that he really understood a lot of things. I never thought he had a chance, because he's from a state where he got 250,000 votes to win, right? But he added something to the race. He really did.
He, he really did. And he's, you know, his background is really one of the great American stories. He came from basically nothing in the middle of nowhere, started working as a chimney sweep, and, you know, built himself, built an education for himself. And then, then he decided to start a technology company. And when it hit big, he made the decision to not move the technology company to the West Coast, like a lot of other people were doing. He kept it in North Dakota, where people could have employment, where he knew that he was going to have the type of character in the people who are working there that you really can't get in California. So he's done a lot for that state. He's, he's done a lot on, you know, even on issues like, he's taken on substance abuse in a way that a lot of other governors are trying to replicate in their own states. He's just a tremendous guy. He, it's a shame to see him depart from the presidential contest, but I don't think this is the last we'll see of Doug Burgum. I think this guy's going to be around for a very long time.
Yeah, he was great. I enjoyed watching him. Now, finally, I do have to get to college football, because you guys had a lot to say about it on your podcast. And I am what they call a double dog, a double dog, D A W G, because I have two degrees from the University of Georgia. My kids went to the University of Georgia. I met my husband at Myers Hall at the University of Georgia. So I have been a University of Georgia football fan for the many years. They were like five and six, and six and five, and seven and four, you know, for all those years that we, we didn't, we were good, we were always good, we were always on the verge of good, because of course, we were SEC, so we were better than anybody else. But, but the last three years have been remarkable. I mean, Kirby's smart. And in fact, I think Kirby's team this year is the best view of his coaching ability, because basically he had to start over, because so many went to the NFL. And so this was a brand new team, from the two teams that he won championships with. And, you know, yeah, Alabama beat us by three points. They didn't play that well that day either, okay? And what should have happened, in my view, is, I don't even think Georgia should have been in there. I think it should have been Texas, FSU, Michigan, and Washington. Because, and the SEC could have been out. And even though I'm a huge SEC fan, I'm going to be rooting for Michigan in that game against Alabama.
Well, I, we are not a double dog household, Martha. I, I'm from Midwest, and my, I married a Tennessee volunteer, though.
Well, well, I'm sorry about, I mean, I'm happy for you, but that you've had a hard time.
They have, they have. So not unfamiliar with SEC ball. In fact, I really like it, and I love the rivalry that has taken off between the Big Ten and the SEC online, and all the fans going after each other. I totally agree with you that I think, I mean, Florida State got snubbed. They won every one of their games. They should have been in it. I don't know what else you're supposed to do besides win all of your games. And, I mean, they beat LSU. They, it's not like they were playing easy teams. So I think they should be in. It, it, it really makes me like look forward to next year when they expand the playoffs. And then you can have, you know, Georgia would have been in that, right?
Well, all of us, all of us Georgia fans are looking at the Georgia FSU game that will be, I guess, what, the Orange Bowl or something like that. The Georgia FSU game is going to be the real national championship game. As we're going to call it.
You got to make sure.
Absolutely. And obviously, I, I love it, because, you know, my dad wanted me to be a boy, so I know all about football. I can, I can look at the plays, I can call the positions, I can do all that kind of stuff. And it's given me a lot of fun in my life. John Ashbrook, if people want to know more about The Ruthless Podcast, how can they do that?
Just go to ruthlesspodcast.com, and everything is right there.
It's where North Georgia comes to talk. It's the Martha Zoller Show on AM 550 and FM 102.9 W D U N.
It is the Martha Zoller Show. I'm here with Shondell Summer. And now we're joined by Heath Garrett, who was former chief of staff to Johnny Isaacson. He is a political strategist and has run many, many campaigns in Georgia and across the country. Heath, welcome back to the program. How are you?
Martha, it's great to be with you on a Friday. What a busy week.
It has been a busy week. And, look, this, obviously, the elephant in the room, or the elephant not in the room, is former President Donald Trump, who does these kind of parallel events at the time these debates happen. But we are now down to four people in these debates. And it looks like the consolidation is happening, and we're going to get to a point, probably by the time we get through New Hampshire, where it's going to be pretty clear who is going to be the South Carolina primary. And the hope is that it's, it's more of a two-person race at that point in time, so that we can actually know who's going to be the nominee of this party. While I think it's very likely it's going to be former President Trump, there's still a lot of work to be done between now and then. Your thoughts on the debate?
No, absolutely right. I mean, these debates have been really interesting. You know, they were designed to start whittling down these overcrowded fields that we have now. You know, once Citizens United and all the super PAC money got in, we started having 16, 14, 12 candidates run. We'd never seen that before in history. And so the process is, it seems to be working, Martha, right? We started out with a huge number on stage, and we whittled it down to four. One of those individuals is really only there because he's a self-funder, Vivek Ramaswamy. And so he's, he's still there. I do think you see the natural progress. I think you're exactly right. Iowa, and after New Hampshire, I think we should be down to one or two at, at best. There is a chance that a couple of folks might be out before then. And it all depends on what these super PACs are able to, to fund through Christmas and early part of January. But I'm not sure this debate moved the needle too much for anybody. And it does seem there's consolidation in and around Ron DeSantis and Nikki Haley kind of vying for that final spot. And we can kind of see where it's naturally headed.
You know, I did not have a problem with Nikki not responding to every attack. I think that, I think that people are tired, kind of tired of that. And especially women are tired of the arguing back and forth, which are the people that are going to decide these races. I thought DeSantis did a better job of honing that I did it in Florida message. He was a little tired with it earlier in the campaign, but he used it very effectively, I thought, in this debate, where he would talk about particular bills, and he would say, yeah, and this is what we did in Florida. So he could show. And there is a huge difference between being the governor of Florida and being the governor of South Carolina. I mean, it's, it's 25 million people versus four, five million people. It's been, he is the governor right now, and it's been a little while since Nikki's been the governor. I like Nikki Haley a lot. And I do think that it's not a bad thing that groups are kind of coalescing behind her that are across the political spectrum. Your thoughts?
No, I think that's exactly right. If you look at, we, we in our business like to look at trend lines. And unfortunately for Governor DeSantis, he came in with such high expectations seven or eight months ago, and he's underperformed those expectations. So his trend line, both in Iowa, New Hampshire, and other places, has kind of been a downward trend line. And about a month or two ago, he started to stabilize. So he's plateaued. It's not a downward trend anymore for him, but he's, he's off of his highs. And that performance was better than his last two or three. But these kind of debate formats are not his forte, and they're not the best venue for him. And that happens to a lot of candidates. Nikki Haley's trend line has been up, up, and still going up, even though she is receiving some criticism from her opponents and from pundits. And one of the interesting stats I've seen, Martha, is that she was the most Googled search, you know, on the stage that night. And so that tells me that people are still just now tuning into who she is, whereas they've known Ron DeSantis, they know Donald Trump. And so she has still, to me, the most room for growth. And I would be watching that trend line and see if she does in a week from now, continue to go upward in Iowa, New Hampshire, and in donations, and in Google searches.
So what, what do you think is ultimately going to happen? Because we're talking about these candidates that are in the 10 to 15% range.
That's right.
The former president is still over 50%. In most polls, I'm seeing a few polls that it's around four, it's, it's below 50. So there's, there is a little bit of erosion, but he's still way ahead. So if you're advising one of these candidates, what are you telling them to do?
Well, first of all, I'm advising them to be patient. I think, and I advise, you know, our listeners out there to try not to pay attention to national polls, because Trump has a much more sizable lead there. But to really pay attention to what are the polls saying in Iowa, and then eventually in New Hampshire and South Carolina. And there, the gap is narrowing. Donald Trump is, you still has a sizable lead, but it's not as solid in Iowa. And you are seeing both Nikki Haley and Ron DeSantis kind of grab greater share. What I would have them continue to do is start to emphasize kind of their values. You mentioned it, Ron DeSantis did a good job telling them what he has done in, in Florida. I think Nikki Haley needs to continue to brandish her bona fides, if you will, and both as a governor and chief executive of South Carolina. But also, she has the advantage of being, I'll talk about foreign policy and national security in a way that the others cannot. And so if she continues to do that, she will have success. And they have to find ways to differentiate, as I call it, they have to call balls and strikes on Donald Trump. But they have to be careful, because they can't be viewed as just anti-Trump, like the media and like the national punditry is. And so when they find ways to call balls and strikes on Donald Trump's either tweets, or some of the policies that may not have been successful, I think they'll continue to erode his lead in Iowa. But if we get it down to one or two people, I think you'll see it become a much more competitive race with Donald Trump in those first three states.
Now, there's a lot of talk about realigning of the parties, okay, that there are traditionally Democratic constituencies that are leaning a little bit more Republican. They're traditionally Republican constituencies. You know, it used to be country club Republicans, right? And now the richest zip codes in America are Democrat, heavily Democrat. And so, what are, are you seeing any of this? Because there's talk about potentially, you know, having 20% of the African-American vote voting Republican this time. We've always garnered a larger portion of the Hispanic vote. And then now with what's going on in Israel and Gaza, you know, I think there are a lot of Jewish voters who typically vote Democrat that are thinking, who, who are the people we should vote with? Are you, do you think that's just a lot of pundit talk? Or do you do you think that's just a lot of pundit talk? Or do you think there's actually a shift going on?
Look, there is a potential realignment for both parties, but that only matters if the candidates running in those parties actually reach out to those who are, shall we call it, up in the air. There's no doubt that not only in the state of Georgia, but in the nation, the fastest group of voters are people that are truly identifying as independent voters. But we're seeing them vote across the party lines on the same ballot, you know? Martha, you and I know that we used to be able to see like 90% of the people would vote straight ticket up and down the ballot. I think that's, that's growing. It's in the eighties now. And I think we see a couple of different groups that I'm paying attention to. There's no doubt that Republicans have a chance to grow their electorate share with African-American entrepreneurs, uh, families and churchgoers that are out there. The further away a black voter is from the center of Atlanta, Georgia, for example, they might be willing to give Republicans a chance as long as that Republican is addressing the, the kitchen table issues that that family is dealing with, uh, as the Democrats push some socially conservative African-American voters away. We also have a huge opportunity to grow our share with Hispanic voters, uh, with our friends from Asia and India and others. And so I think there's a huge opportunity there. And then you get to what, uh, the Israeli Hamas situation is doing to kind of moderate, uh, white Democrats who are looking at their party and going, wait, I don't recognize a party that can in any way or shape or form align itself with Hamas who are truly international terrorists. So, and but at the same point in time, Martha, I think what we as Republicans have to be careful of is that white men, white college-educated men under the age of 60 are also starting to become more independent and move away from Republicans where they used to vote straight ticket for Republican. They're starting to pick and choose if they think that that Republican is getting too far out there on populism or other issues that don't address their kitchen table issues. And so that's where the Democrats see an opportunity. And, and of course, you know, I'm a lifelong Republican, always going to be one, but I, I want to make sure we don't start losing, you know, not just suburban women, but college-educated men under the age of 60. That's a real concern for us as Republicans.
Absolutely. Heath Garrett, thank you so much for being with us today.
Enjoyed it. Thank you, Martha.
To hear the full versions of last week's Martha Zoller Shows, go to the podcast page at accesswdun.com and you can follow me on social media, @MarthaZoller.